Call a meeting to order, start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes from the last meeting?
I make motion to pass the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
I make a motion and then we pass.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second at my mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a mail. We don't have anything for you to share. Anyone else have anything? I don't know whether any of you have had the opportunity to look at your email, but on October the 17th Lori King came by and wanted to contact each member of the council. And I think they also contacted members of the commissioners about the, what could be done about the, stop the manure storage in the north end of town. And so I had an opportunity to talk with her and we talked about the idea that it was within the legal bounds and it was in Wayne County. We really didn't have any jurisdiction over it. I think Barton has addressed this a couple of times. But in the discussion with her, she wanted to share, there's another meeting on the same topic. This Thursday night, same church, Milton Christian Church, 307 Highway 1, 6:30 PM in the church basement. And I think she'd like to, you know, speak to anyone else that would care to give her a call to find out additional information. And that brought up the question, I think Jill asked the question. Is everybody okay with giving out email contact information or phone? So that if someone calls with a question?
I have no problem with it.
Don't bother me, Ben.
I'm certainly okay with it. Is that what this was all about? I found this in my mailbox.
That's what that was all about. Jill has a copy and I think Jill put it in each one of our, each one of our mails.
I thought someone had sent me a bill or something. And I really didn't have a clear explanation about what this was about.
She was wanting to talk to people about the, about the storage chicken manure.
If everybody is okay with it, then they should give their information to Ben so we can get it up on the website.
Yes, and I think too, for those that don't maintain an email address at home, you could have an county email address so that we could put it there. So we could offer that, I think, Russ and Mark. Okay. Next item. County attorney?
I have nothing new to report today. Unless anyone has any specific questions.
Does anyone have any questions with Chris? Chris, I had an opportunity to speak today with Tammy White and she's in the office of the State Board of Accounts. While we were working with the budget process, it was our intent to come up with some incentive for meeting specific cost reduction targets. And there's discussion pro and con and whether it was something that could be allowed under legislature or statutes and what have you. And so I did have an opportunity to speak with Tammy White and other counties are asking or inquiring about that. And she indicated that it must be, the provisions must be put in the salary ordinance that we're going to approve for the next year. And I think if we could have some additional discussion on that with what we had hoped to accomplish so that we can make sure we've got all the provisions down in writing so it's clear, everyone has a clear understanding of what the criteria is. So that was something I was supposed to research out from the budget process. And so if we can get together?
Yes.
Pursue that. Any other questions for the attorney? We're down to reports. Commissioners representative, Barton?
We addressed the camera issue this morning with Ben. He's got the cameras in. Ben is completely overloaded with maintenance, putting in computers and the cameras. He indicated that he's going, there's going to be $2,000 left off of that 30 that we appropriated for this project. So the commissioners authorized him to go ahead and contract with some help to go ahead and get these cameras in with that money. And he indicated that he thought over the weekend, over a weekend, they could get that done. And I think it's important that we get them in, get going. We've got tax time right now. Get those cameras in the treasurer's office in the hallways and get this process completed. On the line of Ben, I think he's probably got more work than what a lot of people realize. And he really needs some, he really needs some help if we could find money for some part-time help for Ben for two or three days a week to get caught up around here. We've got computers that we purchased in June or July I think for the community corrections over there are still sitting here and he just hasn't had time to put them in. And he thinks he could get, if he could get some part-time help, you know, he could get this, get everything caught up and get this on a stable basis.
I know they've tackled, he's tackled quite a few large projects for the improvement.
I know we're tied on money, but with the reduction in help we have around, it's causing a burden on some. The community corrections, we've got a problem over there. Most of that, most of those personnel are on, are part-time people. And with our new policy of just going 28 hours a week on account of Obamacare, whatever you want to call it, on the insurance, we've had three or four people in the last two weeks that have been hired by another entity here in town. So she's short ended, just can't.
Difficult to find anybody to help out with these projects.
Right, right. So if we can, if we could put, we could find some money for some part-time help or a floater or whatever, if we would share help.
But did I understand that the additional, within the funding that was set aside to complete the gap?
For the courthouse cameras, we have enough money in what we appropriated in the added funds for, for these cameras to go ahead and hire somebody to help Ben to get them installed.
To complete that project.
Yeah, it doesn't do much good to have them here if we can't get them out and get them a go-in.
Okay.
The commissioners toured the courthouse and the annex today and studying what rooms are available and what space we've got available. With the reduction in help, we have a problem with some. We're also, one in particular is Bill McDaniel's in there planning. By the nature of his business, he has to be gone part of the time. He's stuck over there by, by himself. When he's gone, there's just a note on the door and the public comes and that's not good. When you go to an office and there's nobody to talk to. We're looking at moving him over there where someplace where at least there'll be somebody there to answer the phone and when he's not there, tell them when they can talk to him and make appointments or whatever. The other thing we've done today concerning the highway garage to get this thing moving on, we chose an architect. And gave him an idea of what we're looking at. He's going to look at those plans to get us a price on, what his fees will be. So we're going to go, we're going to go ahead get our plans put about for bids and then we'll, we'll see what it really is going to cost to.
Who, who have we selected?
It's Mays, Mays and Associates, I believe they call themselves.
M-A-Y-S or?
M-A-C-E. And they're, they're out of Richmond. And he, they have, they've constructed several buildings sort of like this. So he seems, seems knowledgeable in what he's doing. We've instructed him to cut this down to just what we need. No frills, let it get by as cheap as we can. The first thing we have, first thing we have to do is make some soil borings down there on that site to, to see what, what shape the ground's in, what's going to take for foundation to put that up. We know we're going to have to move it from where the president's site is because we learned that's on a dump. So we're going, we're going to take soil borings in the back. And in addition, we're going to, at the same time, have those people do soil borings in that piece of ground in the front that we don't own. We've had permission from the owner to do that and possibly see what the difference would be in constructing that there or purchasing that piece of ground down in front of us, which we should have owned all along. We already had, we've had quotes on people who do the soil boring. Both of those people were people that just happened to be, that the architect is familiar with and uses most of the time. Those quotes was within $50 themselves. So that's, that's pretty much where we are. Any questions?
What size of building are you looking at now?
We're, we're looking at, at the same, well, about the same as, as what we was looking at before. We was talking about a 70 by 300. We're going to see if we can scrunch that down some by reducing the amount of office space in there, lounge area and cut that much down. And we're talking about possibly instead of putting the mezzanine up above that, which would be costly, maybe we could make a lower, lower structure on, on that portion of it to reduce across and have, have the, have our storage down on the, on the main floor instead of a mezzanine, which would, which would be safer for the, you know, all that stuff that you have in the, in the highway garage is all heavy. It would be better to put it down to ground floor than up, than up above. So we're, we're trying to look at, see what the cost would be one way or another, which, which way would be the cheapest.
What size of garage area will they have to work on the crocksey in?
Jay, you remember what the, I don't remember what that is.
It's a, it's still set down to three bays, what we had in plans. I don't know if you had to.
I don't, I don't know.
I think 160 by 70?
Well, that, that 160 by 70 includes.
Is garage area?
No, no, that includes the office area.
Does that include the office?
That includes the office area. Of course you've got about a, you've got about half of it in garage area and office area and the other half being the open front. That would just be a gravel dirt floor and open, open on one side, just a, just a storage building. I don't think, I don't, I'm pretty sure we can't get it done for your figure of $300,000. We're going to, we're going to see how cheap we can get it done and then go from there. We've got to do something. We looked at, that architect was down there today and we looked at it. He gave the same opinions of the structural engineer here before. That building is shot and we're going to, we're going to have to get out of it. We hope we can get through the winter. If things get much worse, we're, you're talking about renting space to put the garage for the working. You can't have people working in someplace where they're going to get hurt. You know, I, I understand what your, your ideas of $300,000, but that, you know, I think that's wishful thinking.
When they get the new garage built, will the old garage be tore down completely?
Yes. Because there's nothing, there's nothing there that's in, in condition that you can repair. And we're going to have to put the garage, you know, we was thinking about maybe tearing that garage down and building one in exactly the same place. After we found out that that's built on a dump, you'd have a big expense of cleaning that dump up to where the, where the state would let you build on it. So we're going to have to either go back of it or in front of it or, or something. If we go back, you can go and be back of it. If the soil borings work out, you're going to have to do some grading there to make that level because it's, you know, it's on a, it's on a slam.
You seen your negotiations for the property you brought to buy it, possibly?
Yes.
How many acres is that?
There's about three acres there. And that's, you know, what we need to do. That's going to be determined a lot by the soil borings, what we find up there and what it's going to cost to, to make the site work up there against what we find down below and what it would cost to buy it. And we did write on the minute, until you get some soil borings, you don't know what the answer is. But the thought was while the people are there doing the soil borings, it won't cost much more to just go on down there and do that while they're there. If you don't, then you decide now, decide later if you have to do that, you come back with a fee, the original fee, it's going to cost a lot more money. So for what, for what that costs, we thought it would be better to, to get that part done now and then figure what's the most economical way to go.
Is there a timeline or a deadline when the soil borings are expected to have those results?
I would, I would anticipate those soil borings probably be done in the next couple of weeks. You know exactly when we get the report back, I don't know, but it's indicated that that's not anything, the process. You know, once they do the soil borings, we know what's there, they can make, make out the report and give it to you.
Barton, you really won't have a clear view of all your options until you get both the soil borings and the architect's renderings?
No.
Both, will you?
Mr. Wenon was very helpful in giving us computer drawings of what we had in mind. We've given them to, them to him for him to just economize on if he can or show us where we could, where we could cut down. And really you're not going to know what the answer is until after you do that, put it out for bids and, and see what the bids come in. That's the only way I know to find out what it's actually going to cost. Everybody you talk to indicates that the $300,000 that the council likes to spend is not going to be enough to do it. You just, you just can't do it.
Well, we'll find out.
We'll, we'll find out, you know, if it's more, then we're going to have to figure out where, where to get the money to do it. We have to have a garage. It doesn't make any, it doesn't make any sense to go to your equipment set outside and rent a building someplace else for your mechanics to work in.
Right.
So. In, and this is, in talking about your, your bonus plan or your incentives plan, this is, this is your decision to make. But I was wondering, Mike and I met with the Highway Union yesterday or the day before.
Yesterday.
About, they, they have a wage opener for this year and they was naturally wanting, naturally wanting a raise. And it was brought up about the savings that, the savings that they have given the county for taking the, in the union insurance versus ours. And I was, I was wondering when, when you was figuring on the bonus plan, was you going to do that by department or, or the savings on the whole county budget? You know, if, if you're going to do it by department, possibly, possibly that would weigh in on.
It possibly could and, and there was, there was much discussion on what the criteria was, but not to the point where we can write down the points. Specific staying within budget and above specific minimums.
Not trying to, not trying to get into your business, but if, if you would make this incentives or bonus on a department or office basis, it would, it would give that, that department incentive to do this instead of, maybe if we do a good job and everybody here don't, well, what's the use of not doing it? Get anything? And if, if one department got an incentive this year and the rest of them didn't, or some of them didn't, maybe the rest of them would start thinking, you know, maybe we, maybe we should try and save you some money. This is the thought.
Thank you. And those thoughts were, you know, discussed during the time. And like I say, I don't think we have the final things put together.
Yeah, I understand.
Whether we need a committee or, you know, a special meeting to, to further discuss that.
But this is the thought. You got any other questions about what the commissioners have been doing or going to do or?
Maybe could you mention to the council, I think there was some discussion at a prior meeting, but you're requesting quotes from two different agencies that, so that we upgrade. Take a look at the ADA and what was it, ABA requirements in the county, not just for the courthouse?
We, we find out, and the city just went through this, that, that you have been required for the last 20 years to have an ADA compliance plan. And the city has hired a group. We had two groups, the same ones that they hired and Butler Furman also was in this morning presenting, presenting their, their plan of what, what they, their proposal to draw up an ADA plan for us. We're going to have to do that. They was quite lengthy proposals and we just took that under advisement and going to study those out and probably have to, we're going to have to hire one or two. There's something else we're going to have to find the money for.
I was surprised at the extent of what he's talking about. Every facility in the county, not just courthouse, but everyone that invites the public, the highway garage or sidewalks and curbs and.
Even down to the animal shelter. Everything that you own has to be ADA compliant.
And not, not just the ADA, but again, architectural barriers. So just, you know, certainly the scope was a lot larger than what I had originally in my mind when the discussion first came up.
And besides that, and making you do it, another thing that happens is if you're not ADA compliant, then they're, they're going to start in that you get no federal funding for grants or bridges or whatever. So we're, we're both going to have to do it. But, but you have to have something like this that is familiar with, with that. And then they have to go around to an inspection, write you up a report and a recommendation of what, what needs to be, what needs to be done. They did, they did say, you know, in cases where it's just, you don't have the money, it's economically not feasible to do it, that you can't get a waiver on it. But you have to identify what those, what those problems are. At least have a, have it in your notes that, yeah, we need to fix it even though we can't. And that, if you do that, then that probably will get you past the constraint of no federal funding or such.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item, committee reports. Mike, I kind of penciled you in there for your comments about the meeting that we had, you had on Monday.
Commissioner Parker alluded to a meeting that I had with, him and I had with a couple of county highway representatives and discussions with their health insurance. I believe that was already accepted by the commissioners, their health insurance. So that's already in place. They, practically their union representative, Michael Strack, proposed a health insurance, a new health insurance plan for them, for the county highway personnel, the union personnel only, correct? Is it union personnel only?
Union personnel only.
And basically what it boils down to is it saves them about $15,000, it saves the county about $15,000 a year. On top of that, they're saving for single plan, plan users, whatever. And people that are married with dependent children, they're going to save about $400 or $500 a, you know, a year in their premiums. Those that are married and have a spouse, it's about a wash for them. I think they get a little bit of better coverage in certain things, dental and vision and so forth. But what they were proposing to us was that the savings that they've helped the county save, that that $15,000 would go back to them, the union employees in, in a wage increase. So for example, for the 2014 year, as a council, we've already approved basically a 24 cents an hour raise for all county employees, which amounts to $500 annually. They're proposing that out of that savings that they get 25 cents an hour on top of that. So that's another little over $500 a year on top of what we were going to propose. They proposed the same thing for 2015. 25 cents an hour on top of whatever we approved for fiscal year 2015, which we haven't talked about that yet. I shared my concerns with them. My concerns were that though the highway department is its own entity and there are certain departments that are their own entities here, that I personally didn't feel it was fair to, to do that, to give them a $500 pay raise on top of other people that are substantially underpaid throughout the county. On top of what we're proposing, we've talked about, which Commissioner Barker, we've talked about, the $500 bonus. So you look at what they're saving in the premiums, which is about $500 a year, the $500 pay raise, the potential for a $500 bonus, an additional 500, top of that, we're talking a little over $2,000 additional where the rest of the county employees are only looking at a $1,000 total if everything works out right. So I'm going to make a motion on behalf of the union representative for the council to consider. And I'm going to reword it, what we talked about. I'm going to word it so that it's not confusing that the way that they would present it and that's, I'm making a motion that we accept their proposal for an additional 25 cents an hour on top of the budgeted 24 cents an hour for 2014, an additional 25 cents an hour on top of whatever we budgeted for 2015. So yea, you're agreeing to that? Nay, we're not agreeing to that. Does that make sense?
I don't think we can legally do that right now, can we?
Well, I don't know that we can talk about the 2015 portion of that. You're saying that the, that the three-year contract has a wage clause that we, we have opened up?
Their insurance is good for three years.
Well, I'm telling you, they have now. They have a wage opener for this year. That's the only thing that can be negotiated this year.
When you say you're 2013 or we're talking 2014, right?
I'm talking about 2013 right now. What we offer, we negotiate now for the 2014 year wages. That's what they're negotiating is wages. So it's, it may be, it may be. That's the only thing we can negotiate now.
Because we've already talked about the, the $500 raise countywide that we've already approved. They're asking for an additional from what they've saved from the health insurance. So that I presented this, Michael Strack presented it to me yesterday. So.
Okay, so Jill, to your point, can we do that if we stay in this year?
I didn't really want to consider this. You want, that you could put in the bullets that you're going to offer.
Something considered, they've saved money.
We need a second first.
I understand.
The $15,000 you're talking about saving, that, I want to be clear, if that's based on what our insurance costs this year, what the cost is going to be for next year on everybody else's insurance, we don't know.
We can assume that we're, there's still going to be a substantial. We can assume that there's still going to be a substantial savings because the rate of their increase was far less than what the rate of increase is for our health insurance, for the normal health insurance for the county.
Right. But like I said, we don't know.
We don't have a 0.5%.
The, the insurance that we agreed to for them is they are guaranteed no more than a 6% increase increase for the next three years.
But they said there's two years remaining, right?
Right.
Total or each year?
Each year.
Six, no more than a 6% increase each year.
Each year, okay.
You know, last year we got a 18% raise. I don't know what we did this year. You can hope for nothing, but the city got, the city just got 2% raise for next year. We're, we're taking close right now for insurance for next year. Hopefully, as you're talking about, a reduction in benefits if this insurance goes up, but you don't have, you don't have a increase in your budget for insurance.
Okay. So having said all that, then Jim, your, your point, if we just are dealing with this year?
Right. Is it legal that we can do it in a meeting like this?
Is the raise for everyone in the department or just the union employees?
Just the union employees.
And not other people that you guys pay?
It's the union, the union, it's the union insurance for the union employees.
So you'd be giving a raise to some employees and not the other ones?
Right. They're wanting to take what they've saved, what they proposed to us and saved, and apply that to their wages, which isn't helping the county at all. That there's no, there's no benefit to the county.
We want to look into if you're even allowed to give a raise to people in the same depart- I mean, I can't speak, that's even, if that's...
Well, I would think you would, because you negotiate their contracts separately.
Right, right.
So I would think that you could do that.
Um, I couldn't tell you right now.
Well, Mike, give it some thought. Maybe we can reword or...
I just wanted to word it. I didn't want to word it to slant it towards my opinion. I wanted to word it as though they were here themselves, so that it came out in the positive, because I'm...
Making the proposal.
Yeah, I'm not for it, because to me, there's no, there's no benefit to the county. There's no saving for the county. Whatever we save, we just give it right back. The idea is to try and save money for the county, and I don't feel it's fair to any of the other county employees. I mean, I appreciate them doing that. I appreciate them, you know, look, being proactive and doing that, but the county employees aren't benefiting from it.
Well, right. And I also, the other point that we made, I do think, however, that the savings should be considered towards the potential bonus of next year. And I think, you know, we are all looking for ways to save, and that certainly should be counted towards the overall objectives.
You know, in some departments, they can save some money, and there are other departments, they won't be able to save money. They work just as hard. You know, I haven't got nothing against the highway department. I like to see everybody get a big raise, but if you start going from department, department, if, you know, it's just like Ann's office down there, Recore's office, there's only, what, one person in there?
Right.
And, you know, how can they say, man?
We're talking about, we're getting into the bonus portion now versus the insurance thing. They're, the commissioners find insurance for the county, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, they're, they're kind of handcuffed as to what they can do. There's only so much they can do with what they're given. And I understand the point, and I, like Councilwoman said, I want to see everybody get raised. I want the highway department works hard too. But then so is the sheriff's department, and they're putting their lives in harm's way. And people like them aren't getting the benefit from this. So I just want to be fair to everybody, and I don't think it is fair. So I guess my motion was, if you want me to leave out 2015, Jim, I can do that, or 2014, but...
I just want to do what's legal, what's fair to all employees.
Well, I think we have been specifically requested to make a yes, no, thumbs up or down on the, whether or not the county could give back the savings specifically in the form of a 25 cent raise. And I think for 2014, and I think that's something specific that we could enter in the form of a motion, if someone could...
He's got a motion.
He's got the motion. You need a second.
Just a second.
Nobody seconds it, and it dies.
Mike, this proposal, is this offered as an addendum to the existing contract down there?
Pardon?
The, the contract calls for a wage opener this year, and that is the proposal for the wage opener.
Okay.
The rest of the contract will stay the same.
So was there any real negotiations that went on, other than the issue of the insurance cost?
No. They're, they're basically asking for a raise, that's the wage opener. The council's charge that Mike, Mike, take care of what negotiations are. The commissioners really had nothing to say about that.
Okay. During budget hearings, council budgeted $500 raises for all county employees.
That's what they're talking about in there.
And then we, and there was, there was no negotiation with county highway department employees involved in that. That was just a blanket.
They were still looking into insurance at that time, and getting other nicknames figured out as to what it would actually be. So when we have our budget hearings and our budget meetings, it was still in infancy stages of what they would save and so forth. And it wasn't until recently, until it was adopted by the commissioners, yeah, that came to. So then they came forward and asked us about this. So I agree with Shirley that, you know, maybe amend my motion to exclude the year 2015, because we don't know what that salary will be. But we, we put a motion on the floor to accept the union's proposal of 25 cents an hour on top of their 24 cents an hour that's already been approved by the committee and the council.
I think, I think the highway department is negotiating this 24 cents. They're not even negotiating this. This is what they're, they opened up their contract, you know, to negotiate, because we already give them the 500 bucks.
Right.
And they're negotiating this right now as 24 cents.
25 cents.
Or 25 cents. And they, and they have opened up their contract for wage negotiation, is what I understand. And that's what they're negotiating, just 25 cents.
Right.
Yeah. And the savings, and where it comes from, if they get it, comes from savings of the health insurance.
Okay.
So we need a second on this motion.
Is there a second on that motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
So let the record show that there's no second. The motion will die on the line. I'm, I'm not sure you want to draw. Okay. Any more committee reports? Move on to new business? Judge Bush, I think we've got you in that slot for the pauper attorney piece.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I need to request an additional appropriation from you, from the Public Defender Fund. This is a separate fund from the Pauper Attorney Contract Fund. It is a fund that the court receives money, is put into it periodically throughout the year when I take someone's public defender fees out of their bond money, or they are required to reimburse all or part of their public defender fees as a condition of their probation. There is currently enough money in that fund for the appropriation. And your budget line balance would show $20,992.99. You have already appropriated for the court to spend $14,543.71. There's a remainder, and actually, it's $21,865.21.
Okay, good. That's the number that we had.
Yes. And then you've appropriated $14,543.71 already. So that would leave unappropriated, but there, able to be spent $7,321.50. And it's getting late in the year now. We're to the point where I need that to pay claims that are pending. Although your balance would reflect more money. There are actually several fairly sizable claims pending for services that have been rendered, cases that have been closed. And so by the time all of those claims are actually accounted for and paid, and I have the amounts of each claim, there would only be $3,072 left of the $14,543. And that's pretty low. So I do need that additional $7,321.50. And hopefully, that will carry the court through until the end of the year. And as I said, money periodically comes into that fund when I take money out of people's bonds or order them to reimburse. So I would ask you to appropriate that remaining balance now, so we can continue to pay the claims as they come due. I don't think it's right to expect the attorneys to work for free or wait for six months, and that's why we switched over. These cases typically, these are the A felony cases that are outside the contract, and that's what we're talking about. One of these claims is, is a dealing in cocaine case, things like that. So that's what that's for. So I would ask you if you would please vote on that. And then there's just, there's just one other matter I want to briefly discuss with you, just to give you a heads up.
Okay. Do we have a motion for this?
Make a motion to accept the initial appropriation request.
Been moved and seconded that we appropriate the $7,321.50. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. I wish everything was always that easy. Thank you for that. I just wanted to give you a heads up, just because I feel like I should do so, just as we are all trying to be stewards of the county's resources. And, you know, I told you before, there are some things that happen in the court that I don't have any control over, but they have a financial impact for the county, like how many people are charged with Class A felonies, or how many people might need to have a psychiatric evaluation to see if they're competent to stand trial, things like that. Well, the court now is in the position where I may be handling mental health commitments on a regular basis. And that's something that historically the court has not done, because we did not have a facility in this county where people could be committed to. The court has traditionally signed 72-hour emergency detentions for people who are a danger to themselves or others, or they're so gravely disabled due to a mental illness that they may come to harm. And I've signed those routinely. But then the people, if they require care after that 72-hour period, they are sent out, they have been sent outside the county for treatment. Recently, Fayette Regional Health System opened a geriatric psychiatric unit, and so people of a certain age could be treated in that facility beyond the 72-hour emergency period. And if those people require treatment, then they would have to either voluntarily agree to it, the person themselves, or an involuntary commitment proceeding would be filed with the circuit court. And that occurred for the first time since I've been on the bench a few weeks ago. And there's a statutory procedure that has to be followed. And we did that. And the case has now been disposed of without a commitment. But those cases require that you have a hearing. And typically, the hearing is held at the treatment facility, because the people who are the subject of the proceeding, it's usually dangerous to their health, or they're a security threat as far as having the hearing in the courtroom. So I had the hearing at the psychiatric facility. And typically, I talked to the judges in Wayne County, that's where Richmond State Hospital is located, of course, and they have a lot of experience with handling those cases. And they always have their hearings at the facility. The hospital graciously agreed to provide a court reporter, so that I didn't have to just try to bring my own recording device and then have my staff on top of everything else. They do transcribe those. So they provided a court reporter. But the, the way that will affect the county budget, I'm prepared to do that, and that's just part of my job duties. But the people who they are seeking to commit involuntarily are entitled to an attorney. So I have no idea how many of those cases will be filed. Mr. Appel has graciously agreed to be appointed to handle those cases for the court for the sum of $60 an hour. So far, we've only had one hearing, and that case has now been disposed of. But there is a potential there, and I cannot remember how many beds the unit even has. But there is a potential there. I just want to give you a heads up, so you know, that we may have those hearings on a somewhat regular basis. And so those people certainly are entitled to counsel. And so there may be an expense for the county associated with that. And obviously, we would try to comply with everyone's constitutional rights and the law and keep the cost to a minimum. But just know that that's out there. So if you see a bill or a claim for a mental health commitment proceeding in $60 an hour, that's what that is for.
Who pays, who pays for the hospital? Who pays for the hospital facility? Does the county pay for that?
Well, what do you mean?
When you, when somebody goes up there, who pays that? Is the hospital picking that up?
Well, that would probably be paid for by their insurance, or Medicare, or Medicaid, I would assume.
Okay. That's up to the hospital to do that. That's not a cost to the county, right?
I mean, no, not the people being committed is not a cost. And then the hospital has an attorney who represents them in the commitment proceeding. And then, as I said, they graciously agreed to provide a court reporter, so I don't have to take a staff member away from the court and drag them up there to do those hearings, which was good. So if you see those claims, that's what they are. I have no idea how many of those will be filed, but I just wanted to give you some advance warning about that.
It would be maybe similar, as if someone from the jail had to go to the hospital for...
Well, except that the county won't be paying for their placement in the facility. You're not going to be paying for that psychiatric treatment. The only amount you're going to be paying is for counsel to represent the people, which that, it's not like a three-day trial or anything like that. You typically have a preliminary hearing and a final hearing. And then, of course, Chris would meet with the people and speak to them ahead of time. So you wouldn't have a huge amount of money unless we just had commitments one right after the other. But I haven't seen that happening. So far, we've only had two that were filed. One person was released before we got to the hearing stage. The other person, we had the preliminary hearing, we did not have the final hearing. So so far, we've only had one hearing, but it's, it's out there. And I just wanted you to be aware of it, instead of just having half a dozen claims come in front of you and not know what they are. So that's that. The only other thing I wanted to say is, because Barton talked a little bit about Ben Houston, that is one of the smartest, best things I think you've done, is to hire him. It's really, really been good for the court. We had a big problem with the virus and things, and he got everything up and running and fixed. And also, he is printing out our jury pool letters. That's about 14 or 1500 letters. And we did have, the circuit court amasses the whole jury pool every year for both courts. And then Superior Court had been printing out all of those documents, because they have a better quality printer, and we didn't want to burn ours up. But Ben has a laser printer, so he's also just taken that on to save the county equipment. And in fact, all of those letters are up in the court offices right now, being stuffed in envelopes. So he's, that's just some of the, an example of the extra work that he does. And it's a high-speed printer, and he was able to print everything out really quickly for the court. So he's really a lot of help to the court. He's definitely worth whatever you're paying him. So, does anybody have any questions about anything?
Thank you for your comments.
Judge, the, the commitment hearings that you referred to, would this normally be paid out of your Public Defender Fund or Pauper Attorney, or Pauper Attorney?
Well, you could pay it out of either one. But here's why, and that's a good question. Here is why I did not feel comfortable with assigning it to the regular contract attorneys who are, you know, have the Pauper Defender contracts. They already are up to, just within a hair or over what their assigned caseload should be. And if I go over that assigned caseload, then they get paid just per hour for the work they do. And so I just really try to keep everybody evened out and keep them right at the level And so I just really try to keep everybody evened out and keep them right at the level they should be and not go over. And you have no idea how much time I spend doing that, but we work with the auditor, and we get these quarterly reports. And then they'll tell me what everybody's weighted caseload is, and then I have to look at it and make sure that they're not over what they should have for cases. And then we get our reimbursement. But if we go over and we don't comply with those standards, for defense lawyers, we have to pay them extra. Or we won't get our reimbursement, because they have too many cases. So I thought, but I certainly would welcome your thoughts on it, I thought it would be less costly and just more expedient to let Chris do those cases. That way, there wouldn't be any conflicts. He's willing to do it for a very reasonable sum of money. And then the public defenders wouldn't exceed their caseloads that they're supposed to have.
Yes. Well, under this new procedure, I'm sure there's no, there's no way for you to even estimate how, how much we may incur in expense in a year's time on that?
I don't know, but I know it's out there, so I just wanted you to be aware of it. And it's one of those things, like I don't have any control over who goes out and commits an A felony. I don't have any control over who might need an involuntary psychiatric commitment, so I can't really keep a handle on it.
So from the monetary standpoint, I guess the wisest thing for me to do is expect the worst, and anything less than that is good news.
I don't think it'll be too bad. Like I said, I didn't want you to just look at the claims and say, what in the world is this? So.
Thank you. We appreciate the heads up.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other new business? No, we'll move on down to additional appropriations. Prosecutor, bad check fees. Sharon, do you have any? Let's see, which ones, can we figure these out?
I'll move to approve the additional request from the prosecutor's office for the bad check fund for $467.50.
And Jim?
Seconded.
Both seconded. Been moved and seconded that we approved the $467.50. So the other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next. Mr. Weiss?
I thought you were in that discussion. You were just in the middle.
We have, for the jail? A couple of?
I have six transfers. Got more review of those, that's totally up to you. Prefer self-explanatory, what they're for.
We have your additional appropriations, but I don't see any transfer.
Yeah, they're, they're there somewhere. The additionals, one of them is for institutional, that is the paper goods and stuff that's used in the jail to finish up, I think that's going to finish up the year. And then the other one is the medical claim.
That's for $15,900?
Yeah, that's for $15,900. That finishes up the doctor maggot for the rest of the year. That finishes up the pharmacy bill for the rest of the year. That also includes paying Fayette Regional, as well as the Fayette Salary Physician. And I'm sure in your packet, you guys have the reduced rate compared to what it was. The one bill's almost $27,000, or almost $23,000 reduced rate. If you guys go with that whole kicking back the savings back for pay raises, I totally support that. And I'll be back next month to discuss. So these reductions don't just come out of thin air, okay? They're not just automatically applied to our bills. When we get the bills, if you look through some of them, I'd rather you not mention any names or anything, obviously, for reasons. But those bills come as they are, full throttle. And that takes, sort of like what the judge said, a lot of phone calls, a lot of relationship building and resourcing, and some explaining of the law and how it applies to our predicaments with these bills. We currently have two others that are still outstanding. One of them is for $12,000 to Reed Hospital, and one of them is for $25,000 to the emergency doctors at our hospital. The emergency doctors at our hospital are privatized, so when I talked to that group, they told me they weren't budging. So I advise them to go ahead and file their claim, and I'll forward that to our county attorney, and we'll see how that goes for them. Reed Hospital, they shot me two rates. If you do not have a contract with your provider, you get charged the Indiana Medicare rate. That is what we're getting at this Fayette Regional reduction, from $30,300 down to $75,43. That's the Medicare reduction rate. If I sign a contract with Reed Hospital, they're going to give me the Indiana Medicaid rate. The bill we owe them is $12,000. We take the Medicare reduction, it goes down to $3,000, or four, almost four. If we get the Medicaid rate, it goes down to $800. Now, obviously Reed would rather have the Medicare rate, because it's higher, but I want the Medicaid rate. We're paying for it. So that would be a savings of about $11,200 off that bill. I'm going to talk to Fayette Regional and see if they would, will go into a contract with us where we can have that Medicaid rate instead of the Medicare rate. That would have cut that bill on down to about $3,000. Now, whether Fayette Regional does that or not, I have no idea. I would hope they would. If not, it's going to make it really hard for us not to go to Reed at a 10% of the saving of the bill, okay? And in our, in our financial situation, I really don't see how we can, okay? When I talked to the building department about the ER doctors, and that they're not willing, their company not willing to budge, they really didn't have an answer for me. Said it was out of their hands. So at this point, if, I really haven't got to talk to anybody at the Schumacher Group yet. Everybody else, I have somebody that I can talk to one-on-one, and we've got a relationship. But I haven't had anybody, because they're based out of Texas. And it's really, I don't think people in Texas could care less about both Fayette County and Indiana when it comes to a $25,000 bill. So, so that's still in the works. Those may be coming for next month from Reed and from them, definitely from Reed to finish them up. But that $25,000 bill, they can just drive up here and talk to us in front of you guys, and we can work it out then. So those are the additionals I need for the medical side of it. It's $15,900. That hopefully finishes up throughout the rest of the year, with the exception of that Reed bill and anything else that crops up.
Billy, who signs the Medicare or Medicaid, or whichever one it is? Who signs that? The commissioner sign that?
The contract.
The contract with the?
You know, so far, I haven't had anybody ask me to fill out any paperwork.
And they're giving you that?
You know, we'll give you that. Yeah.
At Reed?
At Reed and Fayette with the Medicare rate.
Oh, Fayette County, too?
Yeah, they're giving us the Medicare rate. The Medicaid rate, Medicare rate is like 11%, Medicaid rate is like 1%. Hospitals don't like that, obviously, because they're only getting, well, Reed will get $800 off the $12,000 bill. They don't like that, obviously. But this is business, and if we can get the best we can get for our budget here, we can work that out later if they figure that out, okay?
But Reed's willing to give you that cheap rate?
She's supposed to call me back. The lady's going to call me back. That was Thursday. I haven't heard back from her. Either way, we're getting, we're getting one of those rates. That bill's coming down by two-thirds. Whether it's $4,000 we pay, or whether it's $800 we pay, one or the other. If we do the contract, Wayne County Sheriff's Department has a contract with them, they get charged a Medicaid rate. If we enter into that contract, and I'm not sure what all that stipulates, before I would ever enter into that, obviously, I wouldn't obligate the county to anything, you know, such as that, that would hinder us, you know, fiscally. But I will get that information and forward that to Chris for his review, and probably would go to the commissioners, I would think. So.
Now, on the emergency room thing, is now, our local hospital is not helping you negotiate that 25 grand?
Some of the people I talked to, I asked if I should, you know, go ahead and go up to the top and ask him to call, and they said I should probably call him myself and try that. So I did that, and I really didn't have enough time to, I don't know, do what I do to get, you know, conversation going. But before I got shot down, before I had to ask, I could usually have to ask for somebody else. So we need a decision maker. And I didn't get to that part of it, and I sort of got shot down with, no, this is what it is, and we're not negotiating. Well, okay, well, behavior reads behavior. So when you're crappy, you get crappy in return, usually. You will remember that deal. So that's pretty much the additionals I have, the institutional and the medical. I mean, they are what they are, there's not much we can do about them. We try to cut back where we can, but on that paper goods and all the stuff out of the jail, we're still running 120, 130 average population a day. I don't know what else to do. We've appealed to our, to the people to put raking the law, but they don't seem to cooperate. So we're going to continue to put them in jail.
Could we have a motion?
I'll move to approve appropriations of the sheriff's department.
Is there a second, and then we can have some discussion? Or do you want to go before the second?
I'll second.
Okay, well, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the appropriation for $6,001, for $15,900 for the county jail. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. We're nearing the end of the year, and I hope this is the last batch of additionals we get this year, especially from the sheriff's department. But in order to try and protect our balance in the general fund as best we can, I would like to suggest that the council retitle these, these two additionals from the sheriff's department. The one from the jail for $6,000, and the one from the jail, the medical bill for $15,900. Retitled both these additionals to a transfer, and transfer this money from the council's tax cap line item. I think the official, the real name for the circuit breaker tax cap losses line that we can use until the end of the year, sort of a dummy line, but it will cover this, these expenses.
What's the balance?
Without reducing the balance in the general fund.
What's the balance in the circuit breaker?
It's 440, 556.
Thank you, Sharon. I would have looked that up. It does the same thing, Sheriff, only it's just going to come out, would come from a different fund, if the council agrees with that. But.
Do we want to modify the?
Your alternative is to cause the county's general fund to end, in, in the year in the red, or more in the red. We don't really know for sure what.
And this is what we did last month?
We did this last month for, I forget now what the, I think it was the coroner.
The coroner's, yes, the county general coroner.
Would you make a motion there, Chris?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we retitle the additional appropriation for $6,000 and the appropriation for $15,900 to transfers from the circuit breaker tax cap losses line to the line items, to the lines that the sheriff needs to pay these bills, okay? That would be 100,0380.
I'll second it. I'm going to move for seconding.
Okay. Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
I've got a question for Billy. Billy, you said the, this will finish you up with the pharmacy to the end of the year. How do you know what you're going to have? I know you know certain medications you've got to buy.
We're averaging.
You're just averaging what you think?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's, that's about what it's ran for the entire year. I don't see the population going down in the next two months, so we average them out to cover it.
All right.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And thank you, Dale, for that suggestion. Billy, while you're there.
Okay. I also have, also have an additional that we're wanting to hire a part-time person to help in the jail. The misdemeanor fund is set up in there to help run and offset some of the expenses for the jail. I want to hire a part-time person out of that money. Pay rate is 962 an hour, that's what the work release center is paying. We're going to work 26 hours a week for an entire year. It's going to cost us $13,006.24. That's for one part-time employee. To get that out of the misdemeanor fund, it requires an additional and an approval from you guys. We want to try to just add a person to help in the jail where we can. We're already shorthanded on stuff, and to help, you know, it can't hurt. So we got vacations and sick days and comp time that we cover, and having an extra person there is going to help fill some of those voids. The misdemeanor fund is not taxpayer dollars. It all comes from the convictions and arrests off our arrestees. So the money's there, there's about $65,000, I think, in that fund. I think that's close. So if it doesn't work, we'd like to try it a year. If it doesn't work, then.
So you need $2,000 to finish the year out, and if you kept them for all of next year, it's roughly around $13,000?
Yeah, $13,000 for the year, yes, that's exactly right. And I'm not sure what debt you put on there, I don't have what she has made up. Again, but I think, you know, we're probably going to run into trouble trying to find somebody at 962 an hour to work 26 hours a week. But possibly there's somebody, we want to be able to go look and see if we can. We'd like to have the extra help, an extra set of eyes and hands in there. With that many inmates, I mean, we've had some chaos in the last couple of months. So it just happens.
How much did you, how much was in the fund still?
I think there's almost $65,000 in there. And that gets, there's about $12,000 or $13,000 goes in there each year, funded back into there from the state as part of our cut. Again, if it, I don't know, we'd like to try it and see if it's going to help out and be enough to offset it. That money's laying there, why not try to tap some of it and see if it'll help with ours, with the supervision and the manpower we have.
What can you use that money for, building sites, employees?
Some of the equipment for the jail. I mean, we've purchased quite a bit of equipment out of that to help redo that kitchen, computers, that kind of radios, we upgraded radios. That's what it can be used for.
Sheriff, you are talking about your misdemeanor fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd have to, your request shows a balance of zero, and that threw me off a little bit. I guess that would be on the, in the fund report.
Yes.
And you've, you've also got a 144 request to go along with this?
For that, yeah, we have a 144 submitted, so we could go ahead and try to find somebody and start the search for that. I still think, I still think it's going to be tough to find somebody, see what trouble Michelle's having keeping people over at the work release center. And our place is a lot more hectic than that at 962 an hour. I'm not sure we're going to be able to even do it. But I'd like to explore it, the money's there. Why not try to add somebody and help us out at no cost?
What are you saying, that which one of the funds that doesn't have the money in it? What are you talking, which one, what are you talking about there?
The sheriff's misdemeanor fund.
It's showing a zero balance.
Yeah, I'm not sure why.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
I don't know why.
On his request, we have here, shows a present balance of zero. But in our fund. But in our fund, I've got my fund report here. I'd have to search through it, but you say there's 60 or 64,000?
There's, it's somewhere right in there.
Okay.
I had my paper from two months ago, and I can't find it darn well.
Sharon, you have any reason why they would show like that?
No, and this is, this is what Beth filled out.
I think when we send that over, the present balance for that line item and for that person is zero. So we're asking for an additional to be put in there.
So that's why it shows zero.
That's why that says zero.
That's why it shows zero.
Right, because there's no balance in there because we guys haven't approved any money.
We haven't approved it. Gosh, you're smart. You say you get about $13,000 a year from the state?
Yeah.
Which would roughly play to pay your salary.
Right. And I would, you know, if we done this, if we ran this for a year to see how it would work out, I would like to see us possibly call the makeup person into a full-time position in there, if not two. So that would transfer that back to our jail budget. And I don't know, I think it's a, it's worth a try. It's worth the investment if we can find somebody to do it, and then hopefully it'll pay off. I mean, we're already shorthanded with people and with our liability insurance jumping through the roof. Why not try to offset some of that and have some extra help, especially when it doesn't cost taxpayers any money?
On the jail inspector, how many men did he say you were short?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Okay.
For our population. Do you guys, guys just sort of think about this?
Now, on that other thing, oh, Billy, on your guy you want to hire, now you've got to buy the uniforms for him, right? Is that coming out of that fund?
Yeah, we, I wanted, I would say, yeah, we probably would.
Well, probably now, wait a minute.
Well, I don't know. I guess.
Can you, can you do that?
I don't know. Yeah, we could, I could buy anything to help run with personnel. Any of that can come out of it.
So you've got to have uniforms for him? You have to have, I don't know what else you have to, would have to have for him?
I mean, the person's going to have to be a specific person who can go. I mean, they're going to have to end up going to jail school. I mean, it's going, it's going to be tough, I think, but.
Okay, so now that comes out of that misdemeanor fund?
The jail school's all paid for by the state. We don't pay for jails.
Okay.
That's all covered. The training's all covered for that.
Okay. Uniforms for that person?
Uniforms for that person could come out of there.
What are they, what are those run roughly?
For the jail, you're probably talking the two, for a part-time person who's going to be doing that, you know, five hours a day, four hours a day, $200, $300, I would think, max with everything we have over there already with some extra stuff. So I, I guess in the, in the whole big picture, I don't contemplate the uniform cost.
I just look at that whole, that whole fund coming. If we're going to hire this guy, then that, everything comes out of that fund.
Right.
How long's your jail school?
A week.
Where's that at?
Plainfield, Kecat.
Russ, I found, I found his balance in the misdemeanor fund right now is $65,446.6. So.
That's pretty close.
It's close.
You've got more than you thought you had.
Oh, okay.
That pays for the uniforms.
That pays for the uniforms.
And the buzzer gun or whatever you get over there.
So the additional, assuming you would find someone and we would approve the 144, in addition to the additional appropriation request, then it could be the next, if you were to find this person, you would come next meeting and ask for the uniforms?
Yeah, that, I would think that's going to come later because just anybody we hire, we just don't automatically spend the money on them because that may not.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion for your request for this year for that 201.
We have a second?
A second.
Been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you. I have one other thing. Our retirement people sent me a form, and it is a police retirement plan that they have to forward to the IRS. It has a signature page on it that has to be signed by the president of the council on tonight's meeting. I have to have this back to them by the 30th of November. It is 40 pages long, and I wish I could have got it to you as soon so you all could review it, but they advised me that there was no fiscal impact on the county in it at all. We've worked with these people for, oh my gosh, 20 years with the reading team, so. You're more welcome to review it. I know I don't want you to just not say, okay, do it, but I went through it. There's really no changes other than what the IRS requires it. But there is a signature page.
Could we have the judge read it to us?
Certainly. Okay. Okay. I don't think that's, I don't know where that went, Russ, but it did go very well. You're going to sign the commitment papers. I'll haul him over. So.
I'll second that motion.
So I don't know at this point whether you guys want to just take my word for it that it's good or.
Ask Mr. Kelly.
I'm making a motion that the president signs it.
We got it on tape, you said, no impact.
Okay.
That's good enough.
Okay.
I have a motion that the president signs it. Second.
A second.
Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Oh, it's been moved and seconded, but I signed that based on Billy's.
Honesty.
Honesty. But he's read it, there's no difference.
Right there.
All right. Any further discussion on that?
You went first this week.
All in favor?
Absolutely.
Opposed? Motion carried. And one last thing, Billy. The actual 144 form that I have, the others don't, that confirms the part-time jail officer at the $9.62 per hour times 26 hours per week, but for a total of $2,001 to end out this year. So, so do we have a motion to approve the 144?
I'll move to approve that 144 for the jail.
Second? Been moved and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Okay.
You have any more?
I think that about covers it. Are there any questions, any concerns, other than the normal stuff? They fixed the rules today, hopefully. It was leaking. It has been for about four months, right on top of my desk.
Good.
So, yeah, it's a good place for it. So.
Well, we've just, I just got a comment. We've been reading about your, your department quite a bit this, this month.
Yeah. Yes. Guys have questions about that? You know, that officer's been placed on paid administrative leave until we get the internal investigation completed as part of the procedures. I don't like paying anybody for being off, but it's part of it, and I wish I could fix it, but I can't.
How long will that report take?
Hopefully, we're going to finish that up tomorrow, Thursday possibly. It has to be sent up to the sheriff attorney for his review, and then he'll send it back, and we'll start the process.
Who, who makes the process here? Is your merit board is involved in that?
Yeah. The merit board, we're going to turn it all over to the merit board and let them decide if there were violations, if there weren't violations. That's why I have a five-person panel for that and let them handle it, and whatever they decide, that's what will happen. Okay?
The merit board decision, there, what, which decision are they making?
As far as?
As, as far as?
They'll, they'll decide a disciplinary action.
Disciplinary action.
Yeah. The criminal proceeding has all been transferred to Franklin County to the prosecutor there, as well as, I'm not sure who the judge, but Judge Earl has refused himself from that case for obvious reasons, so I'm not sure who's going to be appointed.
Just a question, and I think we probably all echo your sentiment, and can you give the council, what is the history of putting people on paid leave as opposed to unpaid leave?
Any unpaid, anything that's you impose as far as unpaid, or if they suffer any loss, that is a form of discipline, and that's considered when it comes time to hand out discipline, whether they're suspended, whether demoted, whether dismissed, that all comes into play. It would be like, I consider it by building up, being in jail before you're convicted and you're building up credit time if you were not paid versus when you go to court, like what ended up happening here with us is you'll get your sentence in whatever it is, is. So he had, he did not suffer any harm or any loss between now, when it happened, and when the decision made by the merit board said.
Thank you. I'm also.
Because he could very easily be found not guilty of anything, and then we would have to refund him, or we'd have to pay him back pay. So I'm really not in the mood for that, so. Any other questions? All right, thank you, you guys. Have a good evening.
Okay, next. Public defender fees. Probation, sorry. We took care of the public defender fee, sorry.
Yes, I was moments from a clean getaway, and Dale asked me to stay.
Oh.
I'm sure that Jenna can handle this very well, but if you have any questions, I'll be.
We jumped around a little bit there. I'm sorry, I got a little bit offline.
That's okay. I had been in, asked for additional $21,000 out of, for the contracted detention costs. Currently, there's a balance of $155 in that. There was $50,000 approved for 2013 to cover beds. We ran out of our contracted beds in mid-October, so we're in excess at this point. There has been a claim submitted, three-seater bridge who we have the contract with. The $21,000 is to cover us till the end of this year. That would equal 200 bed days, and it is part of the contract. If we don't use those 200 days, it rolls over, and so we will still be able to apply claims to that to cover this contract period. I just wanted to bring up, I'd asked for $75,000 for 2014. With the $50,000 and this additional $21,000, we're still talking less than the $75,000 that I asked to be appropriated for next year. In addition, this year, the extra care of juvenile costs that are non-contract, electronic monitoring earlier this year, I asked to have some money transferred, and that's being paid actually out of juvenile probation fund rather than county general. So basically, it's kind of the thing, we can't control the kids that are going to get arrested. I do have guidelines for the probation officers on call. It has to be a felony offense. The only time it's decided that they are to be detained is when they are correct to themselves or the community. And typically, usually in the summer, we reduce greatly when school's out. We don't do that many detentions. However, this summer, we went up a lot, and it's unavoidable situations. A lot of these kids end up going to placement. We had four kids in at the same time, two were brothers. Mom had passed away the month before, dad was in jail. We had no one to release them to. Made a report to DCS to see if they would take jurisdiction. I believe we ended up doing a placement for those kids. So basically, at this point, the $21,000 is to cover until the end of the year.
Let me butt in and say, thank you for bringing that up, and with regard to those brothers, and that's a good example of something that's a cost you don't anticipate, and it's also, obviously, you can hear a very sad situation as well. We are quick to recognize when a case might be a child in need of services case, a welfare court case, that's what it used to be called, rather than a juvenile delinquency case, and that's an important distinction for a bunch of different reasons. The state of Indiana now pays for those DCS chin's placements rather than the county when it's a juvenile delinquency case, that then you're talking about county detention costs. But also for the child, because then if they truly are a child in need of services, if they don't have a parent who's alive or available because they're in jail, they're a child in need of services. I have personally, myself, called the DCS hotline on numerous occasions to initiate chin's proceedings on children that end up in the juvenile delinquency court just because they go out and commit some act while they're completely unsupervised or don't have a parent. So we really try to pick up on that and control that and get those children funneled into the right court. But in the meantime, you have some children that don't have a, a parent available at all, and you have to do something. So that's kind of what happened in the last couple of months. It's a very regrettable situation, but that, there it is.
And I did also want to bring up that we contracted with Cedar Bridge, who this claim is for, the per diem for that, this year's $105 a day. And I was notified that if this doesn't get through tonight and we file the claim at the next contract period, any excess, excessive days that we have over the contract, we have to pay at the non-contracted price, which currently is $149. So it's actually going to cost the county more money to cover that claim. Currently, we have no kids in detention, but like I said, we detained three in one night, and it was, they were brothers, and it was kind of unavoidable, and it's something that you really, it's not an exact science, like base it on averages, but you don't have control over what the kids are doing and the dangerous situations, so.
Is the judge trying to work with you pretty close, is she?
Well, of course she is.
We have talked about it many times.
Where was those beds at that we give, you saved us that money that time on those beds?
Those got rolled over.
Where are those beds?
Those got rolled over to the next year, and they got used, and these, if they're not used, will get rolled over. And we keep close track of how many bed days we have left all the time. And we talk to the juvenile probation officers about the standards and what they should think about before they put a child in detention. Obviously, there are factors other than this money, but we are well aware all the time, and we try to make the juvenile probation officers aware of that, too. They won't let you use one of those beds for us because you're too old.
I'm just, I'm just wondering about, you thought I was too old to remember that? You give all those beds back to us?
I would hope so, yes.
Yeah, actually, in January, we had 41 days left from the prior year, and we used those plus the contract.
We got all of those bed days.
I did ask for less than what I did this next year because we had those rollover beds, and had our averages gone the way they have the last two years, we'd be fine, but it didn't, and it's not something that we have control over, so.
Well, you probably were not messing with the figures, they're numbers, or you're not messing with the numbers right. You were kind of getting them.
Of course not.
Jenna?
Yes.
Or Judge, either one, refresh my memory of the clause. We had a discussion about this early in the year. When, when you changed, when our contractual agreement changed with Cedar Bridge, and we had these rollover days, is that what took us into April? Did they?
Yes.
Our rollover days took us into April of this year?
Yes.
So our, our current contract guarantees Cedar Bridge $52,500 a year for 500 bed days, right?
Well, the, the additional $21,000 we're asking is, is $200, so it was 105 per diem. And then the original contract was for 500, so it's a total of 700 per year. And we may have rollover. I mean, we could have 100 rollover to the, to 2014 if we don't use all of this 200 by the end of the year. Basically, I just want to keep the contract price at $105 as opposed to $149 to save the county some money till the end of the year, but then they'll roll over in 2014 if we don't use them.
And we don't have to start paying until we've used up our days.
Right.
We don't use up our days, we're not, or that's what I talked about before at the beginning of the year, Dale, is why on earth have we been paying this contract all these years ahead of time when we have 200 or 300 rollover days that we haven't even used up? And we have those days just sitting there, and then we started paying the contract for the new year? Well, that's what we're not doing anymore.
And I, we've reduced that. I believe we were asking between 90 and 95,000 in previous years, and we've reduced.
And we still had unused rollover days.
On top of that, true. Yeah.
Well, including the rollover days plus what you, you've used since April, have we hit that 500 bed days mark?
Yeah, we did in the middle of April, or in the middle of October.
Okay.
So, so basically, if this gets approved, the 21,000, that would equal 741 bed days for 2013, if we use those additional 200.
Okay, that helps me explain it, because I know so far this year, we have actually paid Cedar Bridge $48,800 and some dollars and change. This additional $21,000 would put it up over 69,000. This additional $21,000 would put it up over $69,000, almost $70,000, which is over, way over our guaranteed $52,500 per year agreement that we have with them.
Well, that was just for that certain number of days, right. I mean, you have the rollover, and we're asking the additional now. And like I said, I already had put in the budget for 2014. I raised it from $50,000 to $75,000, and even with this additional here, I'm still under $75,000 this year.
Okay, well, I understand it better, and I appreciate your explanation, and the judges as well. If there's no other questions pertaining to this, since this transfer request is against the county's general fund, I would also like to retitle this additional to a transfer from our circuit breaker tax line item. Keep this additional off of the county's general fund for this year.
You want to make that in the form of a motion, Dale?
I was thinking I did, but I'll put it in the form of a motion to retitle this additional appropriation request to a transfer request, seconded.
Okay, it's been reviewed.
Okay, I got a question. To what extent do you try to place these kids with other relatives?
A big extent.
Okay.
A huge extent.
And really, we are, as far as looking at alternative means of where they can go, now, because, it's good for the county, but because the state now pays the cost for residential placements and foster care, basically, we have to present everything at the state level to have them approve whether we can do this or not. And so, it kind of ties us up. And right now, we looked into foster care, actually, for one of the boys that was in detention, and there are none available. We do look at alternative forms of release, so that we don't have to do detention. We're also being held up with those kids that really need to go into residential placement. They stay in secure detention until we can find that placement, which, it depends on who has the contract with the state and whether the state can curse. You know, for example, we had another boy in for almost, it was over a month, no placement facility in Indiana would accept him. We ended up placing him in Ohio. And that, we had to wait two weeks for DCS to do a physical tour of the facility. They had a contract with them, but they had never been there. So we had to wait for them to actually do the tour to okay it for us, to say, okay, we'll pay for it. So we're kind of getting held up with other entities that we really have no control over. But they are paying for the residential cost, which county used to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for that.
Who does it transporting those kids?
Usually Cedar Bridge, actually, who we have a contract with.
And that's part of the contract, and we make that be part of the contract, that they transport.
Otherwise, it would have to be the sheriff, and say, if a female...
So if you were in Ohio, you had, you had to place him over in Ohio, and the sheriff had to haul him, haul him over there, is that true?
Well, Cedar Bridge did, because we had detained Cedar Bridge at the time, so they will transport for us. Otherwise, the sheriff would have to.
Who's Cedar Bridge based out of?
Muncie. They used to be known as Muncie Reception and Diagnostic, and then they were bought out by this company called Cedar Bridge, so.
Do we use the facility up in the north end, any?
The pavilion. That is for more residential with mental health illnesses and things like that, they're not considered security detention.
So that's changed over the years?
It's a different placement. Secure detention is basically just, almost like jail for kids, is what security detention. No.
Basically, it's been the same, no?
Yeah. Most of the time when kids went to the pavilion, in the past, they call it psychiatric residential, and it was on emergency basis, and it's paid for by Medicaid. But it's up to the pavilion, they have to follow the guidelines that Medicaid will approve and pay for it. Basically, they have to have a mental health diagnosis, be suicidal or homicidal, that type of thing.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, that we rename the request from an appropriation request to a transfer request. So, any further discussion about that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign? Motion carried. How about a motion to approve the $21,000?
Make a motion to approve the $21,000.
Second?
I'll second.
Second, Mark Navi. It's been moved and seconded to approve the $21,000 additional request. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Did we get all of the additional appropriations, A, B, C, D, E, F?
Right back, Judge.
I will. Nice to see you.
Bye. Bye.
Right back, Jenna.
Okay. If so, we'll move on to transfers. And is there a representative from the Health Department? Jay, I guess we'll move on to Highway Department. What page are we on for Jay? What can you tell us?
Which one are you looking at?
I think for Health Insurance Line Item, for $23,000, transfer to Gas and Diesel.
That happens last year.
Doesn't have anything to do with the price of gas being $4 a gallon for oil?
It just, dude, we didn't have enough in there to cover the whole year, it wouldn't happen, we just run out. We actually got a bill waiting to be paid in Sharon's office up there from last month. And this should get us through the rest of the year, it's coming out of the excess money we had put in health insurance that we didn't need, because every day we had $50,000. So that's what this is for.
Okay, then the other one for moving $3,500 from part-time to hardware and tools? Money is needed to purchase tools?
Yes, we're replacing some tools in our shop truck that we use out on the road, and we're trying to replace it, because we don't have enough in there, it's hard for the guys to drag them out of his toolbox and throw them in the truck and take them with him. Those toolbox, you can't load them in a truck and go.
Okay. Were those the only two requests?
I think that's it.
Okay. Can we have a motion from the council on these requests for transfers?
Make a motion to approve the transfers.
Second? Anyone?
I'll second to approve both transfers.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve both transfers. Any further discussion on these two? Gentlemen? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jay, thank you.
Hey, Jay, I got a question for you. On your, on your secretary's overtime, what did you have figured for her to do while you were on vacation? I could take two hours of overtime daily?
She's, she's coming in, I come in at 6:00 every morning to get everything started, get the work areas lined out and all that stuff, she's doing the same thing, I'm doing the rest.
Coming in at 6:00 in the morning?
Yeah, and she, because there's nobody there to break her for lunch, she's missing her lunch hour, and Sundays, she's late getting out of there.
Now, it used to be, when those guys, when there wasn't nobody there, you used to have the guys answer the phone that was in the garage or whatever.
With the one, with the one guy in there, you can't depend on him being in there, he's just halftime, he's out on the road or something. And usually, if I'm there, I fill in for her while she's off on lunch, because usually I'm...
I thought, I thought last year we talked about Jerry Gobin going down there while you was on vacation, or checking in or whatever, that's what I kind of thought that...
Usually, when you get Jerry Gobin, he'll come in in the morning, then you won't see him the rest of the day. And if I leave Tim in there to do it, she know, I got, I give her a list of what I need done, and if they get done with another project, she can move him right on to the other project, that's why I just go ahead and put her in charge to do it.
What kind of projects did you have them to do while you were gone?
They've been trimming trees, ruck, burning, patching, and doing some ditching along with it.
Okay, and I got a call from one of your, one of our taxpayers out here on 150, denying for this afternoon, about a ditchy project you guys got, that, I don't know, I don't understand what the, you're not, you guys are not doing anything with it, or you are doing something with it?
It's what the problem with that project is, there's some big trees right there in that ditch, along that, on the east side. And when he talked, Gobin was supposed to have somebody come and take the trees out, because they're too big for us to handle, our equipment, they're just bigger than what our equipment can handle. And it never did get done, and we can't, you can't ditch down past them, that's the whole problem.
So we gotta get, so you gotta get somebody to get those trees out of there?
Trees have to be taken out, I had Jerry...
That's really our dish to take care of, right?
Yeah, I had Jerry calling back again today, because he said he hadn't been able to get a hold of Gobin, because he was the one that made the agreement with him to go ahead and get the trees out, and then we ditch it the rest of the way out. Because the way it's set up right now, you can't ditch it.
What are you gonna do, what's the plan?
I haven't heard from him back since he talked to him, if he talked to him, that's what I need to find out. Yeah.
So Ken is coming in at 6:00 in the morning?
Yeah, when I'm not there, that's the only time.
What is she doing on Sundays?
Sundays, she was out with, they got a call last Sunday on a sign, that she had to come in, open up, and bring them in. Because I just, when I'm going on vacation, I just give her my phone, and they just call directly, call her.
How long does it take to do that?
Well, they automatically get two hours when they come in, the overtime does. And she has to sit down, wait for them to come back in. That's in their union contract.
Wish I got that.
The biggest killer is, when you come down, you get called to go to something, and you don't get a call back, because somebody's already got it, and you're down there trying to find it for two hours, and you can't find trees now. We run into a lot of that.
Yeah, I was just curious about the overtime, I mean...
Yeah, that was it.
We're looking at this, we're kind of watching this overtime, and we kind of check this overtime stuff, and you're not the only department that I've looked at. And when that just, that just popped up real good. And every time you're gone, it's two hours, it's automatically two hours, I don't...
Yeah.
Does she need to come in at 6:00 in the morning?
It helps, it helps her to get caught up through the day, through answering the phone and taking care of all these other chores, because I've had, this time I've had her, I had her running the bid, getting the bids ready to go out, because when they changed our computers over, we lost all our bid sheets, the copies of what we had, and we had to redo them all. And she was working on getting that, and getting them sent to the people, so we could get them out, so they could be back in for the 15th of December. So it's getting close, and she was working on that, she was trying to get that caught up, she tried to get their year-end reports, in the process of getting caught up, so.
So when you changed, when did you change your computers over? When was it? Can't remember.
It's been a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Seemed like every time we changed over something down there, we lose it.
Yeah, and I've lost a lot of stuff out of it, it's because you're going from...
We lost our road, road programs?
You're going from an old Windows program to the new one.
Windows XP to Windows 7.
And a lot of times, it won't accept it.
Well, here's the problem.
Some of the software.
Is, the IT that was handled before wasn't tracking that stuff, and I work with this stuff every day. And what they should be doing is keep track of what's on these computers, and obviously, that wasn't done. So when they update it, and you're absolutely right, some of the programs are compatible with only Windows XP, some are Windows 7, some are on Windows 8. And that's probably where they're running into the problems, but Ben, in his defense, doesn't probably realize what's on these computers, all the programs, they read, write, they reformat them, they do whatever.
Yeah, because we run a softworks program down there, it's not compatible with what they got up here at the courthouse, and that's why I'm trying to get Ben to straighten out
I would think that Ben, a lot of that would come to an end, though. He's probably tracking ghosting machines and so forth.
One more question, on last, on last month's minutes, I think Mark asked the question, how many, how many miles of chip and seal? And the response was, it averaged 15 miles per district, plus they did some payment. What, what district, can you define? Is that like posy township, or are we talking about commissioner's district?
Commissioner's districts is where it's put...
Which is like top, middle, and bottom of the county?
Well, actually, it's not top, middle, and bottom, it's split off, you got one to the west side, yeah, you can see it.
Show the districts there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on that district, the districts. How it's...
The one goes from the north all the way down to 300.
Okay.
And then below that, all the way over to the east side, is Zane's area, and the section down 250 and down and over is Barton's area. And that's where it divides off.
Okay, so...
It's not a line during downtown.
Yeah, it's got the line showing it.
So that, so then, back to the minutes, 15 miles per district, or 45 miles total counting, give or take?
It's probably a little more than that, unless I went back and checked it, because I know, I think Barton got 14.9, and I think Zane got about 16. And I, no, Zane got about almost 18, and I think Fedora got about 16 something. It just varied off, because which county needed the most work, from where we did it. They didn't have a problem with that, and we just split it off that way, because you need to put in the areas you needed in.
Right, right. I just was wondering, was per district, was it commissioner's district, so did that, what was our total for the county?
Yeah, we usually try to keep them as close, the same amount each district as you have.
And then, I'm sorry to ask this question, oops. Equipment malfunction. The, how much per mile? How much per mile? You may have answered that question last month. Is that something you could pull out of your head, or maybe bring to our next meeting?
I can bring it to your next meeting, tell you exactly how much it is, a mile of chip seal.
That, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
I get asked that question quite frequently, so. I should refer them to you, right? Thank you, Jay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay. Patient concerns? Have everyone else helped?
I got one question for the attorney. I think about the last meeting, I know I've asked this, with what's going on with our Jerry Gobin, and the records, and it was reported, or... That the records that were in the office were his records. And in my personal opinion, I believe that they're property of the counties. Who's monitoring what he's taking, what he's not taking, because I saw him the other day carrying boxes out, and I'm sure, don't know if it's, what box, what was in those boxes, I have no idea. But it made me remember that, you know, who's monitoring what is leaving that office, and what is county property, and what isn't county property, and so forth and so on. I mean, I know what was, you know, what had happened, what's reported in the paper, with, you know, basically running another business out of the county office. Who's tracking that?
I mean, who, is there someone who oversees this department?
Well, that's kind, I think we need to, somebody needs to figure that out, because, you know, he's been there for a lot of years, and there's a lot of records down there, a lot of information that could be going. I'm not implying anything, I'm not implying that he's not being forthright and honest, I'm not insinuating that at all, but, you know, most places where you, when you leave or whatever, they're checking to see what, what is leaving, that you're not taking property of the company. And I think we need to put something in place, we need to have something to, to look at that.
Chris, wouldn't that be the commissioner's job?
Whatever entity is in charge of his office, it would fall under their scope, I believe, to monitor the contents of that office.
I'm just bringing it up, not as if that's our job, I'm not implying that it's our job, I'm just asking, you know, do we know of anything that's being done to monitor that situation?
Now, this time, I can look into options on what and whatnot, what can be done to ensure that he, county records that are county property are accounted for.
Because in my personal opinion, anything that was done on county equipment, county computers, county printers, that should be property of the county. computers, county printers, that should be property of the county regardless of what name it was done under. County equipment was used, county time was used, you know, whatever that.
Well, that means everything in there.
I understand that, I guess that's what I'm saying. Is that we have to protect ourselves as a county. So my question is, is can you find out who's doing that and what is being done to monitor that situation?
Yeah, I'll find out who, first of all, who can do that, and then second of all, what they're doing and figure out a way to get a report of how they have been planning on ensuring that.
There should be an inventory list someplace, but a lot of that big work, it'd be hard to. There should be an inventory list there.
It's paperwork, surveys and things like that. None of that's on the board.
Chris, I think that jurors should be informed tomorrow that nothing else is to leave that office until it's approved.
I think it's up to the Commissioners to say.
What I'm saying, that's what should be done. I agree. We should tell the Commissioners tomorrow that they should inform him, but that's up to them to make that decision, what they want to tell him.
Is this, I mean.
I'm trying to protect the county.
Work product, work product, you know, who does it belong to if it's done for? I don't know. Say with county equipment.
Well, I would say everything in that belongs to the county. Because he was doing it on private time, that should be filed at his home and not in that county office.
Right.
So basically, he should be taking nothing out of there.
Right.
I agree.
I don't want to be, I don't want to sound cold or.
No, you're not cold.
Meant spirited, but.
It's a fact. I mean, that's the way it is.
You've got to protect the county and the residents of the county.
I agree.
So you will.
I'll talk to the Commissioners and see what is being done and, I mean.
He does a good job.
Anything that's in the county office would be, I would think would be property of the county and how they go down the course.
I can't take files out that I've created because the proprietary information, you know, the company that I work for, I would think the same applies.
I know we got down to number 10 and there were no patrons left, but does everybody have an agenda tonight with transfers A and B? Debbie called in today, you know, she's been with, personal time with Dick being ill. She had a request to transfer 24,596 dollars from Contract Services to Budget Line Item Unused Sick Days, to pay for the unused sick days to employees. So this is an additional transfer request that would like to add to your agenda item number C. Debbie called in to talk to Sharon for us to be able to.
I apologize, that's what I went to my office to get a while ago. We did a test this afternoon and I left it late in Beth's office, so I apologize for that.
24,600 dollars again from Contract Services to unused sick days. Mark made a motion. Do we have a second? Movement seconded, further discussion? Two seconds now.
I don't know, okay. A couple people.
Jim or?
Seconded enough, give it to somebody else.
Was that Jim?
Yeah.
Seconded, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, one last item after patron concerns was, do we want to have a separate meeting, an advertised meeting or, I guess it would be an advertised meeting, for the purpose of creating this ordinance for the, that can be passed with the salaried ordinance? And I believe we will pass that at the first meeting in January. So some discussion that we all held during the budget hearings that Chris may or may not have been part of at that time. Dale has some specific items that we want to maintain balances as recommended by DLGF or by, who presented that report for us?
It was the UMBALL report.
The UMBALL report. So maintaining balances in the funds in addition to the cost savings that we're hoping to gather from all of the different departments, not just one. I don't think anyone intended that, you know, cost reductions would be handed out by department, that it was everybody in the county has to work hard to obtain cost reductions and therefore then there could be a potential bonus up to the $500. Someone has to put together the wording of that. And Chris, do you feel you and Dale and I could maybe sit down with that if in fact we need to advertise it for the whole council? What do you see?
As far as wording the ordinance?
As far as wording the ordinance?
I think I could do it. Would you want that, to have the special meeting to talk about it and then have the ordinance ready to go at a regular meeting? Is that what?
I think that we would like to present it before the December meeting so that it could be voted upon and used then when we approve the salary ordinance. And I know we're running out of time between now and the end of the year. And that's my fault, I just had not had time to find and track down the right person to talk to about it at this date.
And you have all the requirements that you can forward on to me?
I think that we can forward the requirements on to you. The people that did the budget work, the Budget Committee, Mike and Dale and.
Mark.
Mark established part of that criteria and I think then, you know, others were bandied Maybe we could take care of it. Email?
That would be the best way for me or easiest way to.
I don't know about email as far as communication within, I don't want to, again, violate the sunshine laws by having this communication by email if we're okay to do that. I think we pretty much established it during the budget hearings. They're in the, these criteria are in the budget minutes. So I think we could just gather the information that we have in minutes already and put it together for an ordinance for everybody to see and we can discuss it next meeting. Is that, would that be appropriate?
That would be fine with me unless you guys wanted to have a special meeting to discuss further.
Yeah, I think the simpler that we make it, if we go back to what we approved in the minutes, then I think then, and put that into an ordinance for voting next month, I think that would qualify for open to the public. I mean, the budget meetings were public hearings as well, so. Okay, any other discussion on that? Other issues? Thank you for your patience. Entertained a motion? Seconded?
What's that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.